Now called to order, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parzik?
Here.
Mr. Dallahan?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape County Herald on January 4th, 2019. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're gonna start our work session with, we're gonna skip over A and F for now and start with the special event applications?
Yep.
Might start with that, okay.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Before I get started with the special event applications, I wanted to say a couple thank yous. Yesterday, I'm speaking right now on behalf of the Go Green Committee. Yesterday was the fifth annual Go Green Fair. It was well attended. We had it last night at the Water Tower parking lot. The Borough Go Green Team would like to thank Atlantic City Electric, South Jersey Gas for sponsoring the event. The Go Green Team distributed reusable grocery bags, reusable produce bags, and reusable straws. The straws had the slogan "Stone Harbor Cares." Start today, change tomorrow. The Eyes of Wild the Animal Show was a huge success. We were fortunate to have eighteen businesses and organizations attend the event, and it will qualify for sustainable jersey certification points when the Borough makes application in June.
And good job by Go Green. It was well attended. And that's the best it's been, right, since it began?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was good. It was nice.
And I also, the Arts and Crafts Festival was over the weekend, so I just wanted personally to thank Kim Stevenson for all her help, the Recreation Department, the Police Department, especially Public Works. They all did a great job making the event a success, specifically Tim Brophy. He really couldn't have done it without.
Good, nice. How do you feel having one done?
I'm glad it's done. Tired. But no, I think it went well.
Good.
We had, we had a hundred and eighty-six separate vendors. Of those, a hundred and eighty-six, fourteen of them had, you know, more than one space.
Okay.
There. Last, from last year, there were forty-five vendors that didn't even reapply. So we had, so forty-seven of the vendors were brand-new this year. So, you know, it was a, I thought it went well. I mean, we were busy on Saturday. Sunday was a little slower, but, you know, it was a really nice day.
Did everybody seem happy, the vendors? Did they make money?
Yeah, I mean, for the most part, for the most part. You know, I mean, some people did great, some people not as good, you know?
Yeah.
But it's sometimes, you know, especially a new vendor, I think it takes a little time for them to kind of dial into what people are looking for around here.
Yeah, okay, good.
It's, I have three special event apps. The first one is the Stone Harbor Fitness Retreat. That is gonna be Saturday, October 12th. That's for yoga classes on the beach at 105th Street. The event runs from seven AM to eight PM. They don't really request any Borough help with that at all, just the fact that they use the beach at 105th Street. The second is the Festival Lights Boat Parade. That's August 17th. The application is for the boat parade. It's held by the Yacht Club of Stone Harbor. It's from eight PM to midnight. And the only request they're making is for the fireboat to lead the parade if possible. And they're requesting that I get the county's electronic sign on Stone Harbor Boulevard warning the public of the extended bridge openings. And then, the last application is for the Chamber of Commerce's Annual Merchants' Day Sidewalk Sale. That is held Saturday, August 24th, from nine AM to five PM. Takes place in the 200 block of 96th Street, and then on Third Avenue from 95th to 99th, and then also on 94th Street and Second Avenue. Businesses just, they'll be placing goods at the sidewalks in front of their stores for their annual end-of-the-season sale. Individual businesses may be requesting to place tents within their storefront properties as well. And that is everything.
So Rogers in the back, any problem with that request? If it's here, you'll be in it, okay.
The boat parade? Yeah, they were just saying if possible.
Okay.
If it's unavailable, they're okay with it.
Okay.
Well, I think, didn't last year the police chief had a boat out? Didn't he last year? I'm pretty sure he did. So if you, you know, if you're delayed, then the Police Department can fill it.
Somebody will lead it.
I would think, you know. It should be, you know, it should be noted, though, and I guess we all know it, but that even though the application says there's no, there's no police required.
Request.
I mean, that's, I think for the Police Department, that boat parade is probably an all-hands-on-deck evolution in the Borough.
Yeah, based on what else is happening around town with parties and stuff, yes. Okay. And questions on any of those special event applications? So, we're gonna have to approve the Festival of Lights tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the actual, I saw the sidewalk sales on there for tonight, too, but there is one more meeting if you have.
So the only one that's time-sensitive would be the one, so we can, we can...
Yeah, that one would have to get done.
We can do that by motion, and the other two we'll put on for the next meeting?
However you want to do it.
Okay.
Jim, I wasn't listening completely. Did you, what did you say about tents for the sidewalk?
What Marnie put on the application was that if an individual store may request to put a tent in front of their store, but they would have to apply for that tent permit?
Yeah, because that really would be interesting, because I think people, some people have tried to do that, and I just don't think that's safe.
But from what I understand, they have to actually apply for the permit?
No, they've done it in the past.
And then, without applying?
Yes. Yeah, who are they applying to?
The same person, I guess, when you're, when you're like applying at the civic club, or who do we apply, who do people apply for?
Construction office.
Construction office.
So they'd have to go through whatever channel that is?
They would have to do that.
Apply for a tent?
So that's...
Same as any other place would.
Yeah, but these are gonna go on the sidewalk. There's, where is the space?
No, no, I'm just answering your question. Who do they apply to?
Yeah.
That's where they would apply. And then perhaps they would be denied based on that?
Yeah. That's how I understood it, that they could be denied that, the individual business, because the chamber's not gonna apply for them.
Sounds like we're opening Pandora's Box.
I don't know if that was not done in the past?
I don't know how that would work if everybody...
I don't, no, I don't think it's ever been done in the past, no.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
But they, they have put them up in the past.
They what?
They have put them out there in the past.
Without a permit?
Without a permit.
Without a permit?
Yes, on Third Avenue. Yeah. Which, to me, is taking up a walkway for people.
Okay. Where's Ray? You on it, Ray?
Enforcement thing.
Okay, so I mean, because if they're, if they don't apply and they do it, it's a violation.
Exactly.
They don't have a permit. They can't do it. So they gotta take it down.
Correct.
Right. Maybe we should be proactive and encourage them not to.
Not to, yeah.
I mean, just picture that.
Can that just be part of the...
What size tent are we putting up?
It could be, well, we could pass it, we could say, you know, and this is, no tents.
How are we gonna anchor them if it's windy? How are we gonna walk past them? I mean, that's turning it into something that I personally think is not appropriate for the town, to have tents all the way along 96th Street or Third Avenue or wherever. I think we're opening up something that I think is...
I would think on Third Avenue, they're infringing onto the sidewalk, so we couldn't...
They would, it would be...
Right, you can't put anything on Third Avenue.
Right.
I'm trying to picture any store that would have enough room.
That's what I'm trying to say.
I can't, I don't think there is any.
They will assume that the sidewalk in front of them is all theirs to put their merchandise on. And I think we are opening a...
So just advise Marnie that appears a no on all the tents, where would they actually put them? Then none of them are gonna meet the minimum requirements, so they couldn't do it.
Well, I agree with you. I think that should come from...
Just tell her.
From the council, or the town, or someone before they start to put tents out on 96th Street sidewalk. That's my thought.
Yeah, all right.
Not a problem.
We can memorialize it, yeah, when we do, when we approve it, we'll approve it with that condition.
Yeah, with that condition.
That's only if everybody understands and agrees. I'm just making them, trying to visualize ten-by-ten tents on the sidewalk in 96th Street or the business district. And I don't know how that's possible, but they did it last year.
They did, okay.
And the year before. There was a couple of them.
That makes no sense.
Same ones over and over again?
I agree. It makes no sense to maybe two people, but...
Yeah, I don't even know where you're...
To allow them is dangerous. That's the way I look at it.
I can't imagine where they're putting it.
No.
They put it under, one of them was on...
I was just visualizing sidewalk.
Yeah, they were.
And ten-by-ten is a, is a fair amount of sidewalk. You have to...
It's it. There isn't, there isn't a ten-by-ten space. And I don't know...
I'm wondering if they're anticipating the possibility of inclement weather. And if that's the case, then they're gonna apply the day before and still be able to have products out there.
Yeah.
But even that, there's, you know...
I'm not condoning it. I'm just telling you, I wonder why they don't know now.
And there's been umbrellas, too. So just careful what you wish for.
Okay.
So, okay, so where are we?
Right.
You're gonna get, you're gonna get back to Marnie and discourage the tent?
I'm gonna discourage the tent.
And then when we put it up for approval, we'll say no tents.
Yeah, and you can, yeah, exactly. It can be approved with the condition that no one is allowed to put up a tent.
Right.
And if it's, if it's stated that way, so if someone does put up a tent anyway, you...
Right, especially because they specifically state, individual businesses may request placing tents with their storefront property. We'll say, no.
No.
Yeah, I think that's clean.
Right, so we're gonna, we'll add, yeah, and we'll add it to the motion when we do it on the 20th.
Much cleaner that way.
Yeah.
All right.
Mm-hmm. And we'll do the Festival of Lights tonight. Okay, nothing else there, then moving on to A and F?
Okay. Before we begin, I just want to thank Jenny. She did do a fabulous job. And I have to say, for all the events that she's been doing so far, she's been doing a great job. So, yeah. First up, engineer.
Thank you. The Smugglers Cove ADA and Structural Analysis Report was completed and submitted to the Borough on July 19th. Similarly, the Borough's 2020 NJDOT grant for the reconstruction of 106th Street was successfully submitted on July 12th. We're hopeful to hear a result on that application within two to six months, depending on the flavor of the governor this year. In regard to the new lifeguard building, we had an initial concept design meeting on July 8th, and our next meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, August 8th. I believe we're gonna have concepts, and we're gonna continue to refine the project. Lastly, we continue to work on six capital projects. They are the 2019 Utility and Road Program, the 114th Street Sanitary Sewer Pump Station Improvements, the Beach ADA Ramp and Pavilion Replacement, Second Avenue Bike Lane Striping, the newer 94th Street Sanitary Sewer Pump Station, Pump Station Installation, and the 94th Street Bulkhead Replacement. Three of those projects are on schedule to be publicly bid for this fall. They are the 2019 Utility and Road Program, the Second Avenue Bike Lane Striping, and the 94th Street Bulkhead Replacement. Should all be out to bid, and in construction this fall.
Which pavilion did you say?
The Beach Pavilions. There's, I believe there's two of them.
Gonna do both of them? Is that the plan, to do both of them? Okay.
So what we're gonna do first, we have the survey and base mapping completed. We're gonna send up a JD to the DEP. Hopefully, we can get them to say, since you're replacing everything in the same footprint, go with God. You don't need a permit. And then once we do that, we'll come back and I'll confer with Grant to see if we're gonna be bidding that, that's being done in-house, et cetera. So we're just have to cross the permitting threshold first.
And the idea is the same exact footprint, basically with the same roof structure and things like that? Okay. Replacing in kind. Okay.
That was...
Just clarifying. So that's ADA Street and 101st Street?
Does that mean new pilings under them? Could sell them as antiques?
Yeah, my, my understanding is we were gonna be replacing it soup to nuts.
Looking at Grant. He can tell us more about that when it comes to the podium.
Yeah.
So when is the, when's this meeting, Thursday, on the, the...
I believe it's...
Life, Shore Patrol, yeah, Shore Patrol, on the life-saving?
I think it's the 8th at...
Because it's not on the calendar, so I'm just like...
Nine o'clock, right?
August, is that, that's this Thursday?
Correct.
Okay, so that's at the same time we have, we have a public safety meeting and a public works meeting, I think, at nine, and then at 11, right? I, I just, I'm just in my, I'm trying to figure out how I got there, and like, nobody knows about it, like...
There's a nine, there's a nine o'clock internal meeting at nine o'clock with us to review, and then we go into our public safety at nine-thirty. All right, hold on. Public saf...
I have public safety at nine.
Yeah, I have public safety at nine.
The progress meeting, the internal progress meeting is going at the beginning of our public safety meeting.
Okay.
So that everybody that's in attendance...
Okay, that's great, that's great. I just didn't know, that's, because I know Mr. Dallahan will want to be there for that.
Yes, and everyone should be here for...
Okay.
The meeting, you're okay. Then we do public works right after that.
Yeah, nine o'clock. Okay, I'm sorry, so we're all, we're all, we'll all be there.
Okay.
Can't wait.
Correct.
We just don't know where we're going.
And that was my report.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark. Tax collector?
Hi. So tax bills were mailed Friday, July 26th. Did everyone get their bill?
Yes.
Yes, yes, good. Okay, so aside from my first year of tax billing, this was probably my most challenging. There was a lot of scenarios along the way. So from February to July, forty-five corrections to the tax duplicate were submitted to the county board. Nine didn't get corrected in time for billing. Six of those I can't correct because they were added assessments, and I can only collect what's certified to me in the levy. Three of them I can collect, I can correct because they were tax court judgments, and under the provision... There's a spider crawling here.
It's good luck.
Thank you. I need it. So under the provision of the Frieza statute, I can correct those via resolution, and that'll be on the agenda tonight. The grace period was extended to August 20th. As you know, if the tax bills aren't out by a certain date, then I mandate it by statute to extend the grace period. I don't have to do a resolution, but I know how you all love the resolution because you want it memorialized, and that, too, will be on the agenda tonight. The grace period, if you saw a little label on your envelope instead of it being physically on the bill, it's because it wasn't physically on the bill. Vital Communications got all of their tax rates at the same time, so they were crazy, too. And they forgot to put my extended grace period on my bill. So they comped my bill. We didn't, that was a fifteen-hundred-dollar charge that they gave to us, so that was nice. They made up for it. Direct debits. That program is going so fantastic. The bank set us up where we have a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar cap for security measures. This last file was eight-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars, which was two-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars short of the nine-hundred thousand. So we had to raise that cap to a million, which is only a hundred thousand dollars more. But we're up to almost four-hundred accounts.
Wow.
So that's really good. And this week, from last Friday, from when we sent the bills out to today, we got ten more applications in. So we love direct debit.
Yeah, I'm surprised there's only four hundred. I would think there'd be more.
Well, we have a lot of elders, and they don't want any, you know, they're, they're not comfortable with the electronics, and they don't want people having control of their checking account. There's, we still have a lot of old-school out there, but we have more young people who are definitely into it. Speaking of the direct debit, the phone calls have been crazy, because on the bill itself, it doesn't indicate anywhere whether you do or do not have direct debit. So we're getting many phone calls in asking if they were still on it. I think I'm gonna add something to the newsletter, to the effect that you will remain enrolled until you cancel it in writing. So people know that. Because they get confused, because on the water bill, it does say that.
Because it does state it on the water bill, yeah.
It says, "Do not pay direct debit program." But we can update those records quarterly. So if you have it this time, you sell the property, we can take it off. But the tax bill is created annually.
Oh.
So if you, and what you're technically supposed to do is if you sell a property, you give that tax bill to the next person. And if it says it on there, well, it doesn't apply to you. It applied to the previous owner. The tax bill follows the property, not the person.
Okay.
So, tax sale. Tax sale's gonna be September 18th. It's a little bit later this time, and I had to do it that way because the tax rate got struck late. And I can't create my list until the tax rate gets struck, so that the August interest is included up to the date of the tax sale. So the tax sale date will be September 18th, and I had some snags there, too. I only have four on my list. I ran the list, I opened the mail, we had a Chapter 13 dismissal. So I had to redo the list to include the chapter, you know, the bankruptcy person on that list. Two people came in and paid while they were running. So it, it was, it's all good, though. We only have four. Two are for tax items, and two are for utilities. And I hope that they all get paid. I'm expecting the bankruptcy one to go to lean, though. On an average, we usually send out ten notices, so we're doing a little bit better this year. We're working on water and sewer billings. They should be out next week. And Jim, I haven't even gotten to month-end yet, but I will. That's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Nope, you sound busy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tax assessor?
Good afternoon.
Hello.
It's been a relatively slow month deed-wise. We only had eight usable sales for July, but we still continue to work on, or I still continue to work on certified lists, co-inspections of fees, deed and address changes, deductions, that kind of thing, answering general questions. Now, the exciting thing is, next, next month I'll start working on added assessments. So we love added assessments. And hopefully, we'll be able to make up everything we lost for tax appeals. And we're still working on tax court cases. We did settle three, I think, Mark? Yeah, so that's about all I have. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, construction and zoning, road enforcement. Tag team.
All right, as of this month, we, we don't have any, any demolition permits that were issued, obviously, because of the ordinance. And there were, and there were no new home permits issued this month. Just slow. But it doesn't mean there's nothing going on in town. It's still very busy with what was under construction. That's about all I have, really. There's really much for me.
Okay. The commercial pools were a hundred percent inspected now. They're a little bit late this year. Business registrations, I reported last month, we had a few more to go. They're at a hundred percent now. They've all been taken care of. Zoning permits were down only by two from a year ago. The, the only thing that went up were the transfers. We did have three more than the same time last year, but that's, you know, reasonable. That's, Board, Board, zoning board last night approved two. They approved a thirty-foot lot for residents at 10019 Sunrise for new construction, and they approved a new deck on 9511 Sunset that overlooks the Bridge Commission Building. For, there's only one unit within that building that doesn't have a deck, because it's on the front corner on Sunset. So, and everybody else has one, so those were the two zoning boards, both approved from last night. Questions?
I have a question. For quite a long time, we would, you would bring to us docks that were being repaired or renovated, and council would get the papers and the paperwork, and we would look at it and say, yes, no, whatever. That just all seemed to go, I mean, we haven't had one in a long time that I can remember.
As far as replace, well, renovation of the...
Any kind of...
Docs?
Docs and piers and pilings.
You mean, for approval from council, you mean?
Yes.
The, the difference is, you want to explain the difference of why ones have to come to council?
Well...
And why they don't?
Normally...
There are certain ones that aren't required to come to you guys.
Normally, if it's just a replacement of deckboards and railings, we don't ask for anything, if it's on a fixed pier. The floating docks typically, obviously, there's gonna be a few different scenarios that put us in the category of not having these go to mayor and council because of either a Zane letter, or if it's something that we can approve in our office from zoning or building, comparing it to the aerial maps that we have with it being grandfathered in, which is not the, a good word to use for it, but I think we're allowed to, or we can make these decisions with certain DEP permit information that comes in with the surveys that we get, that are replacement of the same existing configuration, aside from...
It just seems like we've had them, and now they're completely gone. And I, I'm trying to understand what you're saying, but I don't.
Well, we didn't...
We were, we were getting them regularly if it was a replacement in kind, and if there was a piling, and we would sit and look at the maps and give the people their, our blessing. I just don't understand. If, if, so what you're saying is, right now, every dock that comes is a grandfathered dock, and you can approve it? And you have gone out and looked at the survey of where pilings are, and docks are, and floating docks, and all that stuff?
Well, that, that all depends on whether it's on the man-made, man-made lagoon, man-made...
Well, they're all man-made.
Man-altered natural waterway, man-made lagoon.
Or whether it's in...
Or it's on the intercoastal.
Great channel.
There's a ton of nuances here, but I think the easiest way to explain it, and the easiest way I know it, if it's a rehabilitation in place in kind, and it's grandfathered or, if you will, under a Zane exemption, which engineers submit to the construction office proof of that.
Yes, or if we get a permit from the DEP...
Or a permit from the DEP.
That, that shows the configuration hasn't changed at all, and then we still cross-reference the 1977 aerials that we have to see if that changed. We, we don't have exact measurements, but you can see that the configuration of the fixed pier or the floating, floating docks and the ramps are all pretty much the same stuff.
In the case of a Zane exemption, you mean, DEP's not scrutinizing, because DEP's maps are gonna be much more in detail than, than ours are, from what I know.
The Zane letter states it will be the exact dimensions in all three dimensions, height, width, and elevation will be exactly the same as what was there before.
As long as nothing changed.
So when we get that letter, we know that nothing...
So some of the places that the new bulkheads are going in, they're not changing anything on the docks, is what you're saying to me?
That's what they tell us.
And then do we go look to see that they're doing?
Unless the DEP approved the same.
The permits that we approve, yes, we do go out and I'll look at the configuration and make sure that it matches exactly what that DEP permit says, or the survey that we do get of the waterway. We, we definitely look at the configuration and the size.
I'm hoping everybody here understands that, because I don't.
Yeah, I, I've been, I've been doing it since I've been here. I'll actually take these permits and they do.
Yeah, but we've, we've had...
So what triggers one to come here?
Right.
What triggers it where it comes here?
The, the owner makes an application to the DEP for their dock, either their fixed pier or their...
And it's changing?
Changing, right.
And it's changing. That triggers it to come here. There's a change of some sort.
They have to get that through...
And that's what I'm trying to say.
Right, and that's, right, and that's...
If you're saying that in a year or so, ever since Joanne left, that there's been no docks or decks or railings that I understand repair, I'm not that, you know, but you can't convince me that a dock has not changed in a couple of years, that it shouldn't be coming here.
Most of them don't because of that reason, because they're, they're locked into that size of that fixed pier, and they know it. I mean, if, if they make these, a decision to not bring a permit into us, and we don't know about it, and we wait for a complaint to come in to say that they, they're doing dock work or, or piling work, other than that, we don't hear it.
The only changes that you'll generally see are on these really small, narrow lots, where they have nothing already, or next to nothing, and they want at least the minimum. Anyone with anything significant or substantial over the water is not gonna change that, because DEP really uniformly says, look, all you're getting, if you want to change anything, is, and I think it's an eight-by-12 little deck that sticks out in the middle of your lot with a ramp to float.
They don't have the room to, right.
Yeah, another portion of that ordinance is if the proposed changes cross the property.
I understand that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I understand that part of it, yeah.
Then that would trigger it.
So, right. So basically, Josie, they have not changed the process that they're following. There, there have been some since Joanne's left, there hasn't been many, but there's been a couple that has come before this council, after Joanne has left. They have not changed what they've been doing, it's just there haven't been that many that have been required to come to council. Um, on the bulkhead side of it, Mark, from our ordinance, Mark has to review all those and approve those with that change. But I just wanted to make it clear that they have not changed their process at all.
So it's pure coincidence that we haven't seen any in quite some time, is what we're being assured?
Correct.
There are, there are a handful out there that I've seen that, that really do need some work, after walking on a few. I mean, I, I would think that we should get permits for those soon, but, you know.
Don't, don't, but, don't we get, do you guys get permit applications, whether it's on the channel or it's on the basin? Is that correct? Stone Harbor still gets, has to issue a permit?
We do.
Yes.
Right?
We do.
Okay.
Or we get calls about it first and then, then we have to inform them that they have to go make an application to DEP to get approval that way.
Just the type of application that Mike receives is different based on whether you're on a man altered natural waterway, manmade lagoon, intercoastal, or natural waterway. And then there's also the rare but existing case in the borough where all the water is not within the deed, so we have no jurisdiction over it. So once you step beyond that bulkhead, you're now purely in the jurisdiction of the NJDEP. So there's, there's a bunch of wrinkles in here, it's not easy to follow just, you know, right here, right now, but I know...
We do also get copies of, of all the permits that are issued from DEP. One goes to the construction office, one goes to the engineer, I think Sue gets one and I've been getting one as the environmental commission because we don't have one. So typically, we will all review them and if we have questions, especially, um, I hone in on the, the bulkhead height. If something doesn't look right, I go into their office at least two or three times a week, double checking to make sure that everything on that permit matches our requirements on that. So basically, everyone that's coming in, there are a set of eyes looking at them.
So right now, we have no docks or bulkheads that are going in?
Just approved one last week for Channel Marine and it had all the approvals that they needed, uh, for the DEP, with, with a DEP permanent survey.
For a dock or a bulkhead?
And we both signed it for it to be...
Yeah, for a dock or a bulkhead?
Uh, a fixed pier and a dock, not, not the bulkhead, fixed pier and, and floating dock.
But the DEP, are the DEP requirements more stringent than the boroughs or are the boroughs more stringent than DEP?
I think they will be specific to the property, you know, I mean, I, I...
A lot of times, we're more restrictive.
Right.
Yeah. And I think Mark has about a half dozen to a dozen bulkhead permits in various stages. Correct, is that fair to say?
Yeah, it, it, I, I haven't, hadn't thought about that, but Josie's right. I, you know, I think the last one we saw was on Berkeley, last one I remember, and that was from Channel Marine. And that was a kind for kind in place, replacement, there was no, there was no change in what...
I think there was a change, that's a thirty foot wide lot.
Yeah, yeah, I think they were going in in kind, that's how I remember it, but that's...
Well, then what you're saying, if they were coming because it was in kind, then they should still be coming if they're in kind.
There, there was one, I think it may have even been the last one, there was one that actually came that he asked for approval for and I think we were questioning why, really, it was one that probably shouldn't have come to you, but it did. Not the confusion anymore.
That it didn't need to because it was in kind, right. I think they, yeah, they changed.
Okay, so then, I guess this has already been asked, what does come to us? What, answer that again if you could, what triggers it to come to us? If it's a significant change over what's been there in the past?
Anything that would be out of the jurisdiction of the DEP. Any permit that wouldn't have, uh, if, if they normally, if it's approved, if it comes in with an applica, or not, not, and, and if an application comes in with an approved DEP survey and permit that has an expiration date on it, that's what we use. Anything other than that, we don't, it would go to you.
But I can remember ones that the DEP have approved, let's just say there, uh, there wasn't a piling here and they wanted to put a piling there and it came to us and we either said yes or no, you can put that piling, but the DEP was much more lenient than we were because the piling wasn't there. I can remember us, and then we would say yes because it made sense because it did this and it did that and it was sort of like, you know, I'm just asking the silly questions.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's not silly.
Yeah.
I said, it's not silly, it's a...
Well, it just seems like all of a sudden, everybody's not putting anything any differently in their backyard on the bayfront properties and that just seems like a quinketing.
There still could be a lot of these that happen...
That's what I'm trying to say.
After hours and on the weekends that we don't know.
That's exactly what I'm trying to say, but you said it.
Until someone, you know, brings it to our attention, other than that, yeah.
All the more reason to go look at our beautiful back bay.
Yeah, well, it's, for me, without having something to reference, I wouldn't know what was wrong or what was right anyway. Other than, other than seeing, uh, a barge out there, which we usually get tipped off on, on any, um, activity like that anyway.
Well, when we did the dredging project, we have pictures and photos of all of the docks, every single dock in our basins from up above that you could certainly use that to say, well, this is the same way and, or no, this is not, and that's only a couple of years ago that that was done.
Well, that's why when it's brought to our attention, we use the aerial maps, the seventy seven aerial maps.
Well, this is better than seventy seven, this was three years ago that we had the whole, all the basins.
Oh, I know, I don't have, we don't have those though, the only thing we have is the seventy seven.
Oh, we have them, we have them in our, in our, we have them, we had to have them to do the dredging.
Seventy seven is a better reference point because that determines what is grandfathered or, in other words, is it, is it considered to be a Zane exemption, so, so it was there.
Yeah.
You really want to look at those as your...
But why would you want to look all the way back to seventy seven if we have two thousand and, and eleven?
Maybe they snuck them in between seventy seven and now.
Right, well...
So, so if we're looking now, then whoever snuck it in from seventy seven on is going to get away with it.
A lot of our DEP permits, when they do come in, if they see something that's illegally done, that wasn't done in seventy seven, a lot of them, I have several downstairs that tell the owner, you must remove, before we issued this permit, you've got sixty days to remove this floating dock or this pier that wasn't allowed in nineteen seventy seven. So those are the years that the DEP goes by, whatever was allowed at that time. We, I have several that tell them to remove something that's not, that's illegal.
Okay.
Perfectly clear.
Quite murky. Anything else for construction and zoning?
Okay. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I've got a borough clerk. Sorry, I skipped, I skipped ahead just to see if you're awake.
Oh, okay.
Okay, um, in the clerk's office, we had twenty nine business registrations, three thousand seven hundred dollars, twenty one certified copies, two hundred and ten dollars, one public appearance, performance, twenty five dollars, one beach concession, thirty percent payment, sixteen thousand five hundred, and six marriage applications, a hundred and sixty eight dollars, for a total of twenty thousand six hundred and three dollars. And in the construction office, there are total for the month, twelve thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, that's all.
All right, then I'll go back to the CFO on the audit.
All right, so we got our audit, it's a little bit later than normal. And the reason because is, uh, the reason is the state held everything up because of the pension notes. There's three pension notes in there, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and the state gives the auditors the information to put in there and until they get that information, they can't issue the report. And, um, this year's audit, you will see that surplus, current fund surplus, ended the year at two million eight hundred and ninety-three thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-one cents, and that's up from last year by a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And in water sewer fund, this, and the surplus was one million one hundred and seventy-two thousand, which was also up from the prior year by two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, there are no findings and recommendations in this audit and, and as you go through it, you'll see that the borough's financial position is very, is, remains strong and there are no structural weaknesses. If there's any questions?
Good news.
Yeah.
And I realize that there's some newer council people, so as you go through it and if you have any questions, you can ask Jim or myself on, on it, um, there's a lot of in, good information in there. All right, um, next, um, I had handed out to everybody, um, we created the, um, schedule calendar, um, for the budget process. And as you notice, we're, we're calling it a five-year budget opposed to just our current one-year budget. So I, we've kind of outlined, um, starting September the third work session where we'll go over in detail, admin, public works, water and sewer, and then the second meeting, we'll finish up with the remaining departments and the, um, operating expenses. Uh, the first meeting, uh, workshop in October, we will begin reviewing any of the capital requests, finishing up at the second meeting, the remainder. Then in November, um, we, we will review in overall, all of the operating expenses. Be, the first meeting in November, uh, the second meeting will review all of the capital expenses. Then, um, November nineteenth, I've scheduled for, to go into closed session during our regular meeting for the discussion of the twenty twenty salaries. Uh, the December third, we'll go over a five-year revenue projection. And then on December seventeenth, uh, we will go back reviewing, um, all the components of the twenty twenty budget, including salaries, other expenses, and capital plan. The reorg meeting, we won't be discussing, so we'll pick back up on January twenty first, an update on any of the revenue projections, um, based on clo, the closeout of the year, start talking about what we believe the tax rate will be and then do another budget review. And then, um, start from there, I didn't, I didn't go any further because based on how far we get into that and where the state is in releasing, um, information to us, we would start doing, um, actual budget, introduction of the, the official budget document. But as you can see, we'll be pretty busy now to the end of the year, um, talking budget. Now, what I, what, what I did is the, the group that you see here, um, knowing that we were going to do a five-year budget, I wanted to try to come up with a format where you can see all five years at the same time, but also see some of the detail. Prior years, you would have, each department had their own line with each specific item and then two or three backup sheets doing that detail. So you'd have to go from one form to the next sheet, kind of looking at it. So I want you to take a look at this, see if you feel comfortable. The first two sheets are just a summary pulling all the departments forward so you could see everybody, like, in general government at one time. But if you go like to borough administration, um, you'll see where I've broken down each of the separate categories, but then also the, um, explanation, the different items that are included in that. The shaded area will be your total, below that are the different expenses that would add up to that total. And then at the very end of the report would be the, the total for other expenses within there. But like I said, Jim actually suggested this format to me and as I was working, working it out, I, I, I enjoyed working with it. I felt it was a lot easier because I could see pretty much everything, um, and I think most of the departments, you'll be able to see everything on one page, maybe two. Perhaps once you get into public works, there's a little bit more of a detail, so we might have to do it into a three page. But just looking at borough administration, when I did it the old way and kind of bringing it forward, there was at least fifteen pages compared to one. So number one, I'll, I'll, I'll save quite a few trees and like I said, I think it's easier for you guys to follow it. I, I basically just plugged in the figures from nineteen forward, so don't, I'm not saying that this is what the departments are asking for. We'll, we'll be giving this out over the next week or so to the various departments to start actually filling in their figures on there. But the, what you'll see is the breakdown is basically for the most current year. They may have to add in line items if they know in year three that there's an item that they normally don't have that they have to do. So you might, that might be plugged in and you might see zero for a couple of years and then that plugged into it. So it's a work in progress, um, we're going to be tweaking it. We're developing for the revenue, basically the same format, and the capital, close to this format. However, there's a lot of detailed information that I want on the capital that you're going to want to see, like for vehicles, the useful life, the, um, condition of the vehicle, maybe photos of it. So I'm going to have to still have a lot of detail for that, but I think that's important moving forward when you're, when departments are asking you to spend seventy thousand for, for a vehicle, you're going to want to know all those details, so that backup will still be there. So like I said, take, take a look at it at your leisure, feel free to give suggestions. Um, it, it is a work in progress, but like I said, it definitely will consolidate it but actually giving you a lot more information right up front.
Did you use two percent for the wages across as you, that's what you did to go across?
Yes, in that very top one, I just, just, just to, you know, set up my files.
Just two percent each year and then carried over the O and E? Okay.
Correct, yeah. So like I said, I don't want you to think, oh, this is what we're asking right now from me and if it was just to show you how it's going to look. Thank you. Got it.
Yeah.
Questions?
Like I said.
No questions, okay.
Questions, no answers. Feel free to give suggestions, I'm open. That's it for that, uh, so then, planning board.
Planning board. So last planning board meeting was July eighth, seems so long ago. Our next planning board meeting is next Monday. Um, we passed a resolution adopting the reexamination of the master plan. We also prioritized, or began to prioritize the master plan and one of the things that we did is establish three subcommittees, the outdoor dining subcommittee, the courts subcommittee, and valet parking subcommittee to start looking into a couple of things in detail to see what can and cannot work. Um, we are beginning to get some community feedback on the courts. So we've received three letters so far from people who would like them read at the planning board meeting and I think one came to council and, um, we're just making sure that the planning board gets that third letter as well and they're expressing a difference of opinion. Um, the other thing that we're working on, and I'm going to ask you to explain it because I think you can articulate it better than I can, the grandfather ordinance amendment for lots and structures is something that is, that was discussed.
So the way the ordinance reads right now, if after our most recent sweeping revisions to the zoning ordinance, your lot had a older home, let's say, that predates that old, that ordinance, was torn down and rebuilt, the current ordinance on our books offers you, if you read it specifically, only one opportunity to do that. So if you have an undersized lot, there was a house on it before the, the, the ordinance in nineteen, was it nineteen eighty-seven?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six. If you tore that house down and then rebuilt a new one, the way the ordinance reads now is there's only one opportunity to do that, if you read that specifically. The amendment to the ordinance that is being proposed is to, uh, take that out of the framework of our ordinance and allow that to happen again because that ordinance has been in place so long that now you're having homes that are not that old, post-eighty-six, being torn down and new homes being put up. So it, it, it really flies in the face of what we normally allow. Um, and, and the ordinance allows that without you going before the zoning board, without you going before, as long as it was a cut lot with a home on it before nineteen eighty-six, you're allowed to rebuild on it. But the way the ordinance reads now, you're only allowed to do that once. So if the previous owner already did that once and someone comes buys it now and says, oh, I, I don't like this home that's here, I want to put a new one on it, the zoning board feel, or excuse me, the planning board feels firmly that, you know, it should be permitted more than once. As we go forward, it's only going to happen more and more on these lots. As we go forward, it's only going to happen more and more on these lots.
And prohibit you from updating your housing stock.
Exactly.
So the date is September 16th, 1986, so if you had a house built prior to September 16th, 1986, and you tore it down now, no, you tore it down once?
You tore it down in 1987.
Okay.
Built a home, that home has now been existing for 20 years, 30 years.
Forty-two? No, 32.
Thirty-two, 30 years, and now a new owner buys it, they're precluded from coming in and tearing down and building a new home. I failed to add, the new home does have to comply to all the setbacks, there's no grandfathering, no nothing like that. Front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, height restrictions, everything that is on our books is still in play, just the fact that you don't have to go get a variance to do that.
Because it's not a lot size.
Right. Because that's always been cut for a home, there's always been a home on it, just because it's been torn down once, it shouldn't, we shouldn't preclude that from happening again to update your housing stock and obviously keep your tax rolls, you know, where we'd prefer them to be.
So is there someone right now that that's happening to? Why did this come up?
I do, not that I'm aware of it, one person in particular has applied at this point, I do not know, no, not, well, I wouldn't, I don't know. Why did it come up?
Right.
Because the Planning Board's constantly looking at issues within the zoning law to see what needs to be updated.
There's an ambiguity that needs to be clarified.
I thought that, didn't some people go before zoning for variance to work through?
Within the last 32 years, I would imagine they have, as to specifically when that last one was, I couldn't tell you.
Right. But.
So if a house was torn down once, but they had a variance to have that size house?
They were grand, no, they were grandfathered.
Grandfathered. They take this.
Grandfathered has the lot size, because it's not a minimum, say, 30-foot lot, but it was a cut lot with a home on it, you need a minimum of 60 frontage.
And how many of them are out there?
I have no idea.
I think some of the.
Just asking questions.
Some of the phraseology, right, I mean, it comes down to buildable lot, if you use the word buildable lot.
Right.
So if we said in 86, you could, you could take that home down, even though it's not considered a buildable lot.
Right.
And put another house on it. So now, here we are 30 years later, saying what was a buildable lot in 86 is not a buildable lot now.
It's really.
I mean, that's.
And you can only replace as it was grandfathered.
Right.
The same footprint.
No.
No?
As long, as long as you conform to all our setbacks.
Current setbacks.
So if it's a real small lot, like a 30, and you have to meet our sides of 10 and 10, guess what, no one's going to want to, so in those cases, those people will end up before the zoning board. But you have a lot of 50s, where they can meet the, where they can meet the zoning setbacks and go ahead and build their lot, or anything under 60 frontage, so.
So long as the rezoning dwelling complies with all provisions of the zoning chapter.
Yes, so if, in the instance of a 30-foot lot, they will.
With the exception of the lot area requirement and the lot frontage requirement, which went into effect after 7 o'clock PM on September 16th, 1986.
Well, that's the substance of it.
That's the substance of it.
It'll be coming back for more discussion.
I'm hoping.
That, the discussion has begun, and we've got a draft that we'll be looking at at the next Planning Board meeting.
There must be someone that this is happening to, because, I mean, if we have an applicant or someone that's trying to do this, and they're being stopped right now?
Or they're going before the zoning board.
Right. But, I mean, I'm just saying, usually when something like this comes up, it comes up from someone or some issue, but it's not the case, I guess.
Well, part of planning is not waiting for the issue, part of planning is planning, so that if you're, you know, if you're aware of something out there that's causing issues or has ambiguity, you try to, we start to flesh it out and see, is the board in agreement? Is this an issue? Is something that should be planned?
Yeah.
Should be looked at? The entire zoning was overhauled, I want to say, 2010, 11?
Yeah, it was right before.
Right after the last time that the master plan was done. So it's part, and that's all going to be looked at even again now, that's part of also what the subcommittee's going to do.
Who are on these subcommittees?
Standby. Outdoor Dining, Reverend Conrad, Lynn Dubler, Charles Kraftcheck, and a member of the Chamber of Commerce, most likely going to be the owner of Jay's on Third. Court Subcommittee, myself, Sandy Slabick, Ray Poudrier, Andrew Katniss, and Paul Cates, Planning Board Engineer. Valet Parking Subcommittee, Tom Hand, Bob Bickford, Charles Kraftcheck.
We're meeting next week, our first meeting.
The Court Subcommittees will discuss modifying the zoning map and the zoning ordinance to change the homes on the courts to a residential de-zone map. If it is agreed upon and moved forward, ultimately, the Planning Board would make recommendations to Borough Council after reviewing the feasibility of making the necessary changes. That is what has prompted the letters that are coming in now. So that's the subcommittees, so forth, three.
I'm also on the Court Subcommittee, there's three of them.
Here, there was a typo in the minutes, and I sent it back to Diane to change the typo, you were left out, and I'm looking at the one that was not fixed, because it's got Ray Parsik on it. I was like, where did that Ray come from? It's supposed to be Ray Poudrier.
Well, I'm glad you said that, because I was going to say, Charles, you're on two of these committees? Shouldn't another council member, if they're interested, be on one of these?
Well, no, we're thrown out to the Planning Board.
This is Planning Board.
Planning Board Subcommittee's.
Oh.
It's the work, yeah, it's all the work of the Planning Board that's coming as a result of the reexamination plan and prioritizing the master plan.
Do the issues that come up, like this particular issue, are they resurrected from current zoning board members or zoning board problems that have been shared with Planning Board? Are they?
No, because the two, it's a separation of powers, so to speak, that the zoning Board doesn't collaborate with the Planning Board.
Okay, so then my question would be, if this is not something that's coming before zoning regularly or recently, why was this particular issue, why is this one an important one? Somebody had to bring it forward, that's all I'm asking, because I thought maybe.
Right, I just, I, oh, Bonnie's got, just a second. And then we asked Ray Poudrier, are you seeing these? Is this a problem in your office where you're looking at something saying, I really don't know how to make the decision here, because it's not black and white, it's gray, and then it's pushing more people to the zoning board as opposed to him being able to make a determination and issue the zoning permit?
Well, isn't that what the process is all about? They go to the zoning board for a man?
And that, because, you know, we don't want to just continually be pushing people towards the zoning board, it costs a lot of money, number one, it's a long process. Right now, the zoning board is packed, I want to say, through to November.
Here's an easier explanation of it, I think, for you, Josie. Every 50-foot lot in the borough, if there was a house on there before 1986, and then someone, let's say, bought it in 1987, and they have now lived in this house, and now they sold it to someone else, but they don't like that house anymore, when they, this new owner now tears that house down, there's a gray area in our ordinance that says you can't build, you have to go to zoning now.
But we haven't had that happen yet.
You want to do that to every 50-foot, every lot in the borough that's under 60 feet, you would have to do that for now, that has had a home on it before 1986, one home, new home after 1986, and now somebody else wants to develop, it's really simple.
How did we discover this again? I don't remember.
There's a number of things, Andrew Katniss, our zoning ordinance is riddled with.
Bonnie's dying out there to tell them.
Can I just?
Sure.
Bernadette Parsik, 9925 Sunset. I know, I was at a meeting when I heard Ray Poudrier say that it was a problem, because, you know, he just replaced Joanne, what, in the last two years? He's reading the zoning code with a different outlook. He wasn't there for 30 years, like Joanne was, when all this changed. She would allow a, I believe she would always allow a rebuild of the 50, on a 50-foot lot, but he's reading it with new eyes, and he's seeing a nuance that he's not sure of. So he wants to clear it up, and I think there was someone that wanted to rebuild on a 50-foot lot, and Ray wasn't going to let them, because he couldn't understand how it was allowed in the zoning code. He didn't, he didn't, wasn't reading it with the same nuance that Joanne had read it with. So I think the zoning code hasn't changed since 86, but we have someone else reading it. And when you read it and not allow someone to build, rebuild on a 50-foot lot, it's ludicrous. There's more 50-foot lots in town than there are 60-foot lots, I'll bet.
That's the perfect word, ludicrous, thank you.
And, but the thing is, the thing that I missed in this discussion, it's not all undersized lots, I think the criteria is 5,000 square feet and over. You didn't have to get a variance, as long as there was already a house on it, then you could rebuild.
Right.
Now, if it's under 5,000 square feet, you always have to get a variance, no matter if, no matter if the house is 40 years old, 50 years old, when you're tearing down, if the lot is less than 5,000 square feet, then, or the lot is less than 5,000 square feet, that's when, that's a true undersized lot, and you always have to go to the, to the Board of Variants. But over, but 5,000 square foot and over, if it has a house on it, you could rebuild according to the current zoning law. That's how the real estate agents all understand it and have been operating for the last, for many, many years, so.
And then as a practical matter, like I said before, once you get to that 35 or 30-foot lot, if you're going to adhere to all the other setbacks, you're coming before the zoning board, because no one wants a 10 or 15-foot wide house and two 10-foot sideyards.
You have to come, you have to, if you build and you want to cross over any of those setbacks, you have to go to the zoning board.
Right, exactly.
But it looks like it also does address the smaller ones like the courts.
The courts have their own.
Is addressed as well, right, so you're talking, you're talking one zone, but in another zone, it is smaller.
A-zone and B-zone. Most, most of the people here have, do not have 60-foot lots, you've got 50 or 50-plus foot lots. Most of the, there are more 50-foot lots, I believe, in Stone Harbor than there are 60s. So to not allow a rebuild of something between 5,000 and 6,600 square feet, well, is ludicrous. But the thing is, I think there was an issue, and it had to do with Ray Poudrier, he came to one of the boards.
Sounds right.
Thank you.
Well, all of the discussions involve Ray Poudrier. I mean, he's at, he's part of the board, he sits on the board, and he, we say, are you seeing this? Is this an issue? It's not, we're not saying to him, we think this is probably an issue. He's confirming whether or not something is an issue, or he's bringing it forward as an issue.
Well, that was the original question, who brought it forward?
And that's what I said, I can't, I don't remember, I can't tell you definitively that Ray Poudrier brought this forward as an issue. I can't tell you that, and I can't even tell you, prior to my time, this wasn't already discussed, because the other thing you find out is, I'm in year three on the Planning Board, the same thing seemed to come up every four years, and they just never get addressed. So it, who, they're just, it's a group of people who, a lot of them, some of them have been there 10 years, and issues just come up, I can't tell you who said this was an issue, I do not remember. Can always listen to the tapes.
Yeah, we discussed it at least three or four meetings.
So Andrew has, Andrew Katniss, at this point, has done the draft to bring back to everybody this Monday to look at it for clarification and discussion, because I'm sure that same discussion we're having now is going to end up being had at the Planning Board as well, and that's where I said, I'm sure we'll continue to have discussions on this to clarify it. And then it'll come before this council for a vote. And that is what happened at Planning Board. Public Works. Hi, Grant.
Everybody got their monthly reports?
Yep.
Sorry about the water report, and the report itself being late, we had some issues getting the water totals to us before we submitted the report, and we don't like to put out the report, incomplete, but it was, unfortunately. It is now, I handed out to everybody the final numbers for last month. We are very busy, that's all I can tell you for this evening, I don't want to hold you up. Kudos to all my guys, they're working their tails off, it's been a very hot summer for them. This week, they've been working seven days a week, sometimes 10, 15 hours a day with all the events we have going on. We got another one tonight, got another one on Saturday, I believe it is.
There's something Saturday?
Sunday's race, Sunday has a race, so we're going to be working right through the weekend, so. Pretty much just trying to keep up with special events, pick up the trash, and maintain anything that's broken on the beaches and whatnot.
I have to mention that, from my point of view, they have been doing it with a smile too, because everyone I've encountered, and they have no idea that I sit on council.
Right.
Has been more than polite.
Thank you, I'll let them know that. But yes, they've been working their tails off, and we are starting to lose some of our summer seasonal guys, especially on the trash crew. So some of the other employees in the other departments have, thankfully, Rocky went out and asked them to come work this weekend to help the trash guys out. Other than that, I only have one change to what Mark said about the crossovers, all the ADA crossovers that are not hard surface, going from the crest of the dune to the heel of the dune, I would like to see them in a hard surface, if DEP will allow us to do that, like the 92nd Street.
You're the boss.
Other than that, he was correct on everything. Two pavilions, and all five of the ADA crossings will be replaced, other than 95th Street. And, wait a minute, 95th, 92nd, and partially 83rd, because that has already been done.
Grant, do you have any idea as to why the water statistics have significantly less this year versus last year?
Last year, we had a wet month, which I'm going to bring up right now, and I'm going to pass these out before I start talking about it.
Less this year? Were you using less words?
Less. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Grant.
Thanks.
So if you look at this month's, I'm sorry, you see the comparison from June, we drew a total of 25 million gallons, 25.28 million gallons, out of our wells. In July, we pulled 44 million, 6.63, so we almost doubled in the amount of water we pulled out of our wells from June to July.
How does that compare to last year?
How does that compare to last year?
Yeah.
I don't have the numbers with me right now, but it's significant, we've never gone that far, except when the alarm went off back in 2007 and 2008, when we started our water allocation permit, we had three months of over 30 million gallons being pulled from our wells, it was a very hot season. My concern is, we continue to go in this rate, we continue to move forward in increasing the size of the homes. we continue to move forward in increasing the size of the homes that we're building, the, the amount of restaurants we have in town, the amount of pools we have in town. We're going to, we're going to reach that, that 52 million gallons a month throughout the summer. And it's going to draw us over the 230 million gallons that we're allowed for the year. We're only allowed to draw 52 million gallons a month out of our wells.
From your point of view, Grant, what do you see as the biggest culprit and what do you wish would happen?
We had a very hot July.
Right.
Very hot July.
We have no control over that.
Right.
But we could have another hot July.
We have an increased amount of pools in town. We have larger homes going up. We have new, new and improved restaurants going into town. We have a new spa that was built. This trend continues. You're going to run out of water. You're going to run out of the ability to draw the water from the wells that we have. The state's not going to allow us. So just letting you know that this is a red flag. Going from 20, 25 million to 44 million in one month, that's a red flag.
I would think that that's something really serious that the planning board should look at.
Didn't we just, a couple of years ago, we get that allotment increased?
We, we had to fight for two years to get it done.
Yeah, to get that increased. And then what?
Five years.
Yes.
Right, so does that, that allotment's only good for how many years?
It's good forever. You just can't exceed it.
But you can't go over it.
Okay.
52 million is your monthly allotment. And we're at 44 this time.
And that's what-
That's only 7 more million, 7 more million gallons.
Is that on an average or just one month you can't exceed it?
One month, each month. You're allowed 200, what did I say, 2, 230?
So what happens when we reach that?
You'll get fined.
Yep.
You'll get fined.
Avalon was back then. They were, they were fined. When I came on council in 2011 or 12, this was what the utility department worked on diligently with grants and Jill's and everybody's help so that we didn't go over. You were on it with me. We were all together with it.
Yep, the utilities committee-
It was relentless work that happened and said that, we thought that was enough of an increase and-
And that was in anticipation of, I don't think the reeds was built yet, even. That was in anticipation of the reeds at the time.
It was, the calculation was included in-
Right, that, yeah, but, right, but it wasn't up and running right. Yeah, so that's how long ago it was that it, right.
Well, certainly it seems like it's an action item for the utility committee.
Yeah.
You can only draw so much water out of your wells because they have to recover. You draw it down, then it takes a while for that to recover. And we're at a point where we're drawing down and it's not recovering. Drawing it down, it's not recovering. And now you're getting back down to where the 800-foot sands are and your screen, you're going to run out of water in this area. We only have four wells. Do you want to drill another well? Do you want to put up another tower? Those are the things that the DEP are going to-
And that was when all of the, we got the ordinance for the sprinkler systems. And it's when we did the increased overage charges and all of those things. And yeah, that was all done through the utilities.
And that, your homes are looking a lot nicer with the landscaping. We, for the longest time, we were doing stone and trying to promote that type of landscape, zero scape landscaping. Right now, you're, every house you go by has got a manicured lawn, flowers, boxes on every window.
Yeah, that are all being watered.
And they're all being watered.
Too much.
Them illegally. We haven't caught, but they're out there. When they get their water bills for this, this quarter, they're going to see it. And they're going to start questioning Deborah about it.
So Grant, of all the elements that you identified, can you rank them as from most, most used to least used? Hotels, restaurants, watering?
That would, we'd have to go back into the archives and look at what the meter reads were in Deborah's office and-
But I think what Frank's asking is, you can, you can now see how much water, let's just say, one of the hotels have used over the summer. I think that's, is that what you're asking?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, you can-
Every individual, they know how much they've used.
I guess where I was going was, is there specific targets of opportunity that we could, as a group, suggest that conservation be more important? Maybe it's a question of swimming pools in the borough to restrict the number of swimming pools that are permitted?
You can.
Have you seen to Wally Bishop's presentation to POA where he offers a lot of the, a lot of what's happening has to, it has to go with, it's landscaping. It's where it's all going, is into landscaping. And people don't, that's, that's the look they want their house to have. They don't want to have the, you know, the, the regular natural indigenous plants there. They just don't want them. They want these, you know, our people, that's what they want. And that's where we try to address this through the overages, through watering lawns. And you know what? They, they just write the check.
Yes.
And that's-
Yeah, one, one thing you can do, and Wally has talked about this, you just say, "This is the only water you get. Beyond that, you don't get anymore." You get X amount of gallons and after that, you've used your allotment. You don't get anymore. So how do you want to use it?
And how are you going to, how are you going to police that? I mean, you're going to go, you can't, you can't just shut somebody down. You got to, you know, health and-
You could shut down a sprinkler system. That's nobody's health or welfare.
Well, some are tied to the house. They don't, not all are set for metering, so.
But that's like we were saying, like, see, because this is what Wally says constantly, Wally Bishop says constantly that we need to make very hard decisions on some of these and in-
You know, we talked about this four years ago and put the conservation word in people's heads. And it was carried out and then pretty much reinforced it the best that we could. But we just didn't think that it was, I didn't think, oh, yes, I probably did, that what we asked for, we were ever going to go over. And we are, we can.
You can.
We can. Hot summer or not hot summer.
My concern, my concern for the borough is that we need to monitor this and, and make some harsh decisions.
Because we went, even through construction, requiring water-saving things in homes.
Right, every showerhead and toilet and everything.
Showerheads and all of that. That is in our ordinance is right.
You can, you can put that all in a home, but if you're going from two baths to five baths and more, to eight baths, you're using just as much, if not more, water.
With the landscaping, the real culprit is the grass. It's really not so much the planting beds and the flowers and the flowerbeds. They're all drip irrigation. It's the grass. And I've been saying this for probably two, three years now, that the turf that they have now, that we use a lot of, is amazing because it looks perfectly manicured, but it doesn't need to be watered. And so I don't know if there's, you know, I think there's a tendency-
Provide some kind of incentive to do things that are not incentive.
That's really where you see the sprinkler running.
You know, I-
Dispensing a lot of water is on the grass, not so much-
Not so much the plants.
No, those are drip irrigation.
Well, does the water that is used to water the grass get back directly into the wells?
No. No, it's a waste of water. It ends up in the ocean or in the bay.
How so?
Because you have clay bed.
We're on an island.
We're on an island. The water that we're getting is coming from, from up in North Jersey underground, the, the mountains, seeps down into the-
Kirkwood aquifer.
The aquifers in that area. And then it comes, it comes down below the clay beds in South Jersey. We're at 800 feet drawing that at, below the clay beds and the sand beds.
Isn't part of Atlantic City also dipping into that?
Yes, not so much now because they're not doing very well.
Not only are we, but they are.
Yeah.
Yeah. Atlantic City-
And how about all the talk all the time of like the brown water or whatever, for lack of a better word?
Gray water.
The gray water.
Gray water is very expensive and you need land to, I know that it's been proposed to do a gray water plant at the marina. But if you want to improve the marina area, you can't put a gray water plant there. You already have a lift station there now that unfortunately-
And you said it requires land, would you, do we have the land?
Do we have the land? As long as you don't use it for something else.
No, I thought you meant you have to have large areas of land, like the, like the fields, for example.
You have to create a processing plant, which you-
Okay.
We don't have that.
Desalination plant. People do it.
And then you have to pipe it. Then you have to pipe it to those, those recreational areas in the islands.
And the islands.
And, and to the homes if you want them to use gray water. That's, that's expensive.
Because we, and the largest can, isn't the largest consumer of water us, the borough?
I would say so with all the landscape we have in all the common areas, yeah.
This is like deja vu.
Yeah, it is.
It hurts.
Yeah.
Left answer to the question, should all the islands be stone?
Oh.
But you just stated, we're the number one-
My sweepers would be very busy if that was the case. They'd be all out on the street.
We're the number one.
Well, there are types of grass that do not take the water that some people are putting down. There's grass that can grow.
But like what Charles said-
I have grass, but it's not as attractive as those that are there, so.
But if you go to a, if you go to a different breed of turf, you also need to make sure that you have the adequate amount of water pressure, electricity, whatnot. We don't have that on the islands now. We're barely getting by as it is. Are we dumping more water than we should be? Probably, yes. But the systems are inadequate. But to improve what we have now is going to cost you millions of dollars to go to gray water, to go to drip irrigation. And then you have to talk about your priorities. And we have storm water coming up. We have, we have wells that need to be upgraded. We have, we have other infrastructure that needs to be upgraded, sewer system.
Grant, is there any way you can figure out how much water is dispensed on those islands?
Yeah.
Yes. I have a couple of meters out on different islands that we can, we can draw.
We know that.
The number's off of monthly.
Okay. That'd be great.
But not every island has a meter on it.
Okay.
But we can get in.
Well, if we get an average.
Yep.
This is scary.
Thanks, Grant.
You're welcome.
That, anything else? I have one quick question. I think it's a, maybe it's an A and F question? I'm not sure. The email that we all received concerning going out to bid for beach replenishment and that Stone Harbor is actually a part of the bid.
Correct.
So what's happening there?
That, that is, what they're doing for Stone Harbor is going into certain areas in the dunes that are higher than what the Army Corps' template is and they'll be taking that off and then spreading it out in those areas.
And that's going to be one of the options in the bid? That particular work? Okay. Yes, Grant?
We, we had, we were in conversations with Chris Constantino from DEP over the last six, 12 months in what we can do. We know we can't do the borough areas. We're having issues with that. So we talked to him about the dune heights that we have now. There are certain areas in town where the dune heights are way over template and to use that to pull down and put it in the front of the dunes and start over again with the elevations. ADA Street is a perfectly example. It looks like a bunker when you, when you look at it from the beach. There's sand piled up on both sides. So it's one of the areas that we would consider pulling all that down, using it on the beach, re-planting it, refencing it and starting over.
So Stone Harbor's portion of this particular bid is not going to be for actual-
For dredge now.
For pulling out sand, but it's just going to be pushing around what we have in some of those dune areas?
Correct.
Exactly.
Correct.
Are we going to be responsible for a portion of that? That's normally whatever our, our responsibility is? No? It's all Army Corps that's going to pay?
And the state.
And the state, okay.
This is, this is their way of saying sorry.
And it's a pilot project because they haven't done it anywhere else yet.
Okay.
So look at us, a small Band-Aid on a big wound.
Okay.
And a one-time Band-Aid.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? We've got five minutes.
I have just a question or a comment, I guess. I don't see Sandy here, but I, last weekend, happened to listen to the Margate Memorial Race. I don't know whether anyone else listened to it. But Dennis Bakie, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, plays second in the singles. So just wanted to mention that, I think, you know, unexpectedly and did very well with the race. I would assume he's on beach patrol.
Yeah.
But Sandy not being here-
Next meeting.
Wanted to mention it.
Sandy will be here next meeting.
Okay.
I have one quick question. Would, I think it would be something to think about since we video these council meetings so that people that can't get here can see us. Could we do the zoning and the planning board meetings also?
I'd like to see us do every meeting. Committee meetings publicly as well.
I agree.
You know? If, I would like to see everything be public and recorded. I mean, I'm all for it.
I was just shooting for planning and zoning, that's all. Because I can't make some of those meetings and I just let, you know, I don't want to go sit at them.
And they're also taped, too, which, you know, the, yeah, the audio tape. We could, yeah, we could tape them. I mean, I don't know what that would entail. Jim doesn't attend them. Somebody else would have to be Jim. But it also, I mean, and thanks for bringing it up